Eventually, we'll call the whole family. For right now, we need for you to to take the light of your greatest accomplishment in your life and on behalf of the citizen submission, we strongly, strongly believe that you're gonna hit 800.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Mayor Council, good afternoon. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Diana Trevino Lerma was born and raised in Mission, Texas, and the daughter of the late Benito En Socorro Trevino, and is a sister of Benito Trevino Jr., Letizia Trevino Ibarra, Diana Trevino Lerma, Sonia Trevino Howell, and Gloria Maribel Trevino. Whereas Diana attended Pearson Elementary, Mission Junior High, and graduated from Mission High School in 1981, and from Southwest Texas State University, which she attended on a full volleyball scholarship. Whereas Diana received unanimous Most Valuable Player, playing under legendary coach Carmela Martinez. In Diana's words, "Teach was my inspiration on why I became a coach." Whereas Diana Lerma was hired by Mission Consolidated Independent School District in 2002 as a Veterans Memorial Head Volleyball Coach. She also served in the capacity as the head cross-country and track coach, an assistant coach in basketball, wrestling, powerlifting, soccer, softball, swimming, tennis, and cheerleading sponsor. Whereas looking back at her long and almost unbelievable successful career that has made the Mission Veterans Volleyball Program one of the best in the state over those 19 years. Coach Lerma has accomplished the 700-win milestone in volleyball and has won 17 out of 20 district titles. Has been named Coach of the Year for 17 years, and RGV Team and Coach of the Year. Whereas Coach Lerma credits her success to her greatest motivator, her mother, Socorro, who never missed any of her nor her sisters' volleyball games. Whereas Coach Lerma has been married for 34 years to Carlos David Lerma and has four children. Sonia Bernadette Lerma, Carlos Luis Lerma, Gabrielle Marie Lerma, and Cassandra Di Lerma. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby congratulate Coach Diana Trevino Lerma on her 700th win and for achievement as a Veterans Memorial High School volleyball head coach. Proclaimed on this the 22nd day of November, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and decide, open it for further discussion. No discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Proclamation on the 22nd day of November. Coach Lerma, congratulations.
I didn't have anything planned, but you know, this is a reflection of opportunity. Here, I know Mr. Canha was there on my first job. Hoya High School, where we ended up starting 10 years, got 10 girls on scholarship, which hadn't been done before, and it's hard to do. But can never repay you for that here, for having the confidence of a character. And that's what the profession that we're in, building character with this young woman. And to tell you the truth, here was an honor and which I was speechless on these girls coming back and then, you know, sharing, you know, their profession, doctors, lawyers, teachers, principals. I mean, that was the thing. It's not a game of volleyball, but it's a game of life. And I know, you know, I was given that opportunity and I wanted to come back home to Mission, Mission Proud. And I'm just honored for this award and having my family here, you know, to share it. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. And it's like you said, we're gonna keep on winning and they gotta keep bumping that belief in this girls and their own community because we can do it.
And we're all stronger together.
Yes.
On behalf of the council and the mayor of City of Mission and all the citizens of Mission, 85,000 or more, presented this proclamation and votes that month day, November 22nd, 2021. Congratulations. Just back to the outside so we can have a folks, please.
Hey, you guys are taller than me and I'm gonna, I'm gonna
Aye, Alex?
Find a window, find a window.
Alex.
No, no, we're good. I found a window.
We need to get you a stairway. Can you see us all?
Judge, any final words? Judge? Yeah, I will allow you to come to the podium, Judge.
I'm gonna ask the order further right now.
Actually, the voice sounds the same. I think you've been accused of that before, right? Yes, you're, it's up to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations again to Coach Lerma. I'll call for the presentation number two. Ms. Mungia, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This evening, we're going to be presenting to you our Employee of the Month for October, which is Mr. Antonio Vargas. He is a heavy equipment operator in our sanitation department.
Is he here?
Yes.
Good use. Please step up to the podium, sir.
I'd also like to ask Ms. Anaiz Chapat, our administrative coordinator, to come up. She nominated Mr. Vargas.
Ms. Chapat, please, sir.
The nomination reads as follows. Antonio Vargas, better known as Tony, to those of us who have the privilege of working with him, demonstrates all aspects of what an exemplary employee should be. Tony comes into work every day with a positive attitude and ready to take on any challenges that the day might bring. He is dependable and he always finds a way to overcome any obstacles that may arise in the day-to-day operations. Tony is also always willing to help with any special requests that come in from our citizens. He has a hefty daily workload, but he always manages to start and end the day with a smile, which is admirable and contagious. Thank you, Tony, for all you do for our sanitation department and the citizens of Mission. Thank you, Tony. Congratulations.
And the mayor, we congratulations.
Congratulations.
The Month, Medio, Avellano.
I am gonna call for presentation number three. Ms. Enriquez, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Ms. Brenda Doolittle.
Thank you, Brenda. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So in the tourism world, we are getting ready to roll out the billboard on tourism to attract visitors to come to Mission over at the Anseldula's Bridge. So that is something that we're working on right now. Our team is also working on a City of Mission map aimed for visitors and tourists. Next week as well, on Tuesday, our Tourism Committee will be meeting. The Vice Chair of Tourism and Community Development this year is Mr. Shawn Downey. The Merit Program, we are really excited. We, our first cohort, which is a total of 11 businesses, sat down through the three seminars for the program. And now, next Tuesday, we have a meeting greet where we're inviting all the coaches and consultants to come and meet the businesses. But as of now, businesses have until the end of next week to schedule their first coaching one-on-one session. And that's happening until the end of February. So they have this time to complete their six hours of one-on-one coaching paid for by the Merit Program and a little bit of the City of Mission. At the end of this, the three cohorts, the Merit Program, we will be having presentations where we will be inviting council members, our mayor and our city manager and leadership team, where you guys will be given the business strategy reports that our interns have come together with the coaches and of course, provide their SWOT analysis for those businesses that were part of this Merit Program. So that's something to look forward to, so you all can see the fruit of this program. And just a reminder, the health fair is coming up on the 8th and 9th. Right now, we are ready to accept appointments. So anyone interested in getting their blood work, please call the chamber between 8:30 and 12:00, Monday through Friday, so we can get you on the schedule. It is by appointment only to help be a more convenient attendance health fair and get your blood work done. Sponsor boots are available. So I did share a packet with everyone. So if you know anyone involved in health and wellness, send them our way. A reminder, so every year, we do do a member appreciation. So this year, the chamber will host their annual holiday for our members. It's gonna be on December 16th. It's gonna be a breakfast from 8:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. And we're asking our members to bring a new unwrapped toy to benefit Mission Community Children in Need and then enjoy breakfast on us. Our Board of Directors, between two board members, they already donated $3,000. So the ladies at the office are really excited because they're gonna spend $3,000 on toys. So we asked the school districts to give us a wish list. So for some of the students that, you know, that are, you know, looking forward for Christmas. So we have that going on. And we've got three ribbon cuttings coming up. So on December 2nd, we have the Edwards Abstracts here in Mission ribbon cutting. On Friday, December 3rd, we have Crescendo Music ribbon cutting. And on December 8th, we have a ribbon cutting with RGV via homes. And that's all I have for this evening, Mayor and Council.
Any questions toward the council, I mean toward the chamber, by the council? Any questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Enriquez, thank you very much for your very informative presentation. And we'll be looking forward to all the events that you have presented.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Call for item number four on presentations. Mr. Perez is here for the council. If the councils have any questions directly to the departmental reports, and if he wishes, he can call any of the department heads to come answer the questions for the council.
Mayor, I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Departmental reports on item number four are approved 4-0. And we're moving for item number five, citizens' participation. And Ms. Carrillo, do we have anybody signed up?
No, Mayor, I don't have anyone.
In person, am I correct? How about electronics, Alex? We have nobody. So I'll go ahead and close item number five and go to the public hearing for planning, zoning, and recommendations. For item number six, Ms. De Luna, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number six is a rezoning for Track 1. It's a 1.4769 acre track of land out of the south, 1/3 of the east, 25 acres of block 11, Del Monte Irrigation Company subdivision of lands in Portion 51. This is from agricultural open interim to R1 single-family residential. And then we also have Track number two. It's a 6.630 acre track of land out of the south, 1/3 of the east, 25 acres of block 11, Del Monte Irrigation Company subdivision of lands in Portion 51. And this is from agricultural, K O Y 2 C 3 general business. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately two miles south, one mile south along the east side of Schubach Road. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the north, planning unit development to the east, west, and south. The future land use map shows this area as low density residential. For Track number one, the proposed zone complies with the city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. For Track number two, the proposed zone does not comply with the city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. Staff is recommending approval of Track number one for the R1 and denial of Track number two for the C3. This is a public hearing. This item is not before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Anybody in the audience, if you wanna speak at this time for the public hearing, go ahead and you come to the podium, please. Identify yourself, name and address for the record. And ma'am, and you have two minutes.
Hi, my name's Alexa Martinez. I'm the daughter of the owners of the land, address 1310 South Schubach Road in Mission, Texas. We do wanna do a residential in the back residential home and we do want the front portion a little bit more commercial just because we have semis. That's where we get our income from and that's what maintains us basically. So we would wanna park our semis, their personal semis, not public semis. And we would wanna do a warehouse for them as well. We do have a school right next to us. We work around their hours. 5:00, we try, we stop everything and 3:15 is we stop everything too, just because we know the traffic can get a little bit rough sometimes. Our neighbors do support us. We've asked around if they have any issues and if they do have issues, to let us know, to come to support us or, you know, if they have problems with it. We never really had any problems at all. In fact, our neighbors have semis and they have them parked in their residential homes. Not only that, but on Schubach Road, about a mile or two from our land, there is more warehouses and more semis. So definitely, they're definitely around there. They're very, very common in that area. So we hope to get it approved and, you know, maybe just see what the situation is and if we can do something about it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have any questions?
We cannot answer questions in a public hearing. If we need to call you back, we'll call you back. But during the public hearing, we can't answer any questions. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the rezoning? Please approach the podium at this time from the audience. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time from the audience. Therefore, I'm gonna ask for Ms. Carrillo, if there's anybody electronically, or Mr. Alex, anybody electronically undecided.
No, Mayor, I don't see anyone.
Well, no? Okay. I'm gonna close this public hearing and ask for guidance from the council. I do wanna let the council know that if there's any wishes of the council to change the denial on Track number two, that we're gonna need a 4-0 vote and a vote by hand because of the reversal that is needed as far as that. Am I correct, Ms. Martinez?
I have a question for Susie about the denial.
You have the, you have the floor, ma'am.
Why did planning and zoning deny the Track 2?
They denied it based on traffic that is generated. We understand there's other units or semi-traders there. They pre-existed prior to being annexed to the city. In this case, this is a commercial zone. They're inclined to a lesser acreage. They're receptive to a lesser dance, but she was insisting on the whole six acres. So that's why they denied it.
But right now, are they running their business from there?
They can't. They just have them parked there. That's why they're going through the process because they wanna keep them. They wanna have a warehouse and eventually do commercial development on the rest of the acres. That's why they insist on the whole six.
Did we go over something like this? It's the same one.
It's the same one. About two months ago, but they were requesting for the whole commercial, to be actually heavy commercial. They were asked for a heavier zone. Now they're going to C3, which is a general business and would allow them to keep the semi-traders and the warehouse that they propose.
Any other questions? You know, from my standpoint, I think that it's appropriate for us to reverse the denial and do approve the because of the area there and the future plan, land mass. I know that we're going to need to revisit that area because that area has been, had been changing drastically and it's been promoting more businesses and is bringing in more businesses in the area there. However, we've been telling them, no, 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 you know. So but we do need, the basic thinking of the council is that we do need to open up more businesses in the Schubach area. You know, definitely, this is a time to make the change and start promoting that. So in my position is that I would like to, I would like to, if a motion is to be able to reverse the denial. And if not, I can make that motion if none of the other council members do agree with me.
Can we have an opportunity to have a little more discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
To get the opinions of the other two council members.
Well, first of all, you have the floor, ma'am.
I'd rather wait.
Then, Ms. Ortega, you have the floor. Or do you?
Well, because staff denied it, right? So planning and zoning went on the recommendation of staff.
They're receptive to about one acre. Rezoning starting with one acre to commercial and then eventually gradually, if any comes to change it. But for now, that's why they denied.
But again, if we do that approach, you know, and they wanna do a major, a major development in that area, they're gonna be restricted based on the acreage, right?
Yes.
And so, I mean, obviously, they have, if we approve the rezoning to C3, then they'll have, they have to come back with a site plan. And at that point, at the site plan, we do pre-plan of the site plan and there we can be able to regulate, regulate it more and more as we zero in into whatever, whatever project they wanna do.
Yes, it would be required to provide a site plan showing what they're
But my position is
But the site plan doesn't come to council.
No, it only
No, no, but the staff
But staff does, will say that. But it doesn't come to council, so we won't have any, any control over what would be on the track.
Yes. But it'll be, it'll be general, general business.
It is.
Yes.
And I would like to approve that or reverse their approval, but also, what we're gonna do or can we address the safety? I mean, the traffic concerns.
That is gonna be done
The way was stated in the
When plan approval, once, once we see their, their general layout, when they apply for a building permit.
Yes, but they did, they did say in the public hearing and to the record that they said that they would work with the schools, to work with the school during their loading and unloading time, which I know the chief and I have had several conversations on that in and around the area there because of the complaints. But, but, you know, everybody has to live with each other, you know, with each other. And they made a statement here that they'd be willing to shut down for an hour or two their traffic, you know, so, or maybe look at alternative traffic through the backside of the, of the six acres, you know. And there's other roads that they can connect to. You know, there's a lot of options to that.
The 1.4769, which is Track 1, is that where they live? That they live there?
No, it's currently vacant. They're proposing to construct a home.
For them?
Can you show the plant again? I'd like to know how much frontage Track 2 has to Schubach. It doesn't show the number. Does anyone know what the frontage is? What is it?
50.
Track 2?
Track 2, Track 2 doesn't look like 50.
Track 1 is 50.
Track 1 requires Track, Track 1 requires a minimum of 50 feet, but Track 2 is what
It is, it is, it is more than 100 feet.
Where the other one is 50?
441.
Yes, for the
441?
But it's a minimum, yes, minimum for the
441.
It's 441.
400, over 400 feet. It's a pretty big size. Yes, there's plenty of space for what they wanna do. And you're right, and then we put it in the plan that for them to do it safely. And then business can continue. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just figured out the numbers here. If we, if we look at our C3 zones throughout the city, you know, Sherry Road, Sherland Road, Sherry Road, normally, they're about 350, 350 feet deep. Is that muscle men's correct?
Yes.
So if we took the 350 feet deep times the 441, that's about three and a half acres that I would be okay to rezonate to C3.
And can we make that adjustment?
To only allow 350?
At least for right now?
We can. We can. The only thing is that
Mayor, they don't need to agree to that or else go back, start all over.
Yeah, well, let's, let's get the council's consensus because before I ask them, before I ask them, are we okay with Ms. Garcia?
I'm okay with it.
350 feet, just it kinda complies with the rest of the C3 zoning that we have.
To designate approximately three acres for general business for right now to start up with. And then from there, if something changes and you start up with three acres and come back, come back to us through the same process that we have. Ms. Ortega, you okay with that? Yeah, we're okay. Now, now, who is gonna represent, you or your mom? Go ahead and you step out here and I'm gonna ask you if you all are okay with rezoning approximately three acres.
Three and a half.
Three and a half acres for general, general business? And get you started and then the rest will stay as A O O 1 or A O I, excuse me, A O I agriculture. And later on, if something comes up, then you need to expand beyond the three acres or whatever, you just come back to us on the zoning, rezoning process.
Yes, absolutely.
And get you started, get you started with your business, you know. So you can at least
And that would be the front portion, correct?
The front.
And the back portion is one, right?
Yes, it'd be that all, all the frontage, all the way to 300 feet in the back, muscle men's. And she'll draft it for you to get you started and then, and then, and you can build your house there also, so you can become a resident in our city, come back and so we can have you as a citizen. And obviously, taxes, as a resident as well as taxes as a business, you know. You know, so because that's, that's what it's all about, you know.
Yes, absolutely.
From our standpoint, this, because that's how we generate revenues for operations. Are we okay?
So you need a motion to approve Track 1 of A 1.4769 on two residential and 3.5 for Track 2?
Yes.
350 feet deep is what the, is that the magic number?
350 feet deep.
Okay.
Okay. She already has a magic number for the record. They will go with what Susie, Anna, make sure that you get the record number from Susie. She'll be able to give you that information for the record, so.
We'll be writing to the ordinance once we use the number.
So are we, so you have the motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. I'm gonna have to ask for hand, hand vote. All those in favors, raise your right hand. Same, same against. I have no against. We have 4-0, which will reverse the denial for that section based on our, on our policies and procedures. And you all can go back and start doing the paperwork for you to help begin your business in the three acre, 3.5 acre complex and then work from there. Maybe you later on do a phase two or whatever, you know. You'll get your business started there in that area at the same time. Just be safe.
Absolutely, you know. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be ordinance 5110.
Yes, thank you. I have another note here. Just haven't read it. For the record, it would be ordinance 5110 or 5110. So you all can have the record to reflect on, on the ordinance if you need any, any reflection on the ordinance as far as that is concerned. And that, and we'll follow the process to adopt the ordinance in its entirety, the way, the way it was discussed here and get you going. Okay? Now a call for public hearing number seven.
Item number seven is a discussion and action to amend Chapter 82 cell
Item number seven is a discussion and action to amend chapter eighty-two sales article two. Garage, porch and yard sales, section eighty-two thirty-two definitions, section eighty-two thirty-five garage sales operators permit. Section eighty-two dash thirty-seven maximum number of garage sales. Section eighty-two forty-one piece, if the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. During the joint workshop between planning and zoning and city council, a direction was given to staff to amend chapter eighty-two sales. Currently in our, in our ordinance, we only have a permits for garage sales. This ordinance will allow for us to to include clubhouse, recreational hall, cell permits, room itself permits, tent self permits and estate self permits. Permits for the clubhouse and recreational room cells and ten, ten cells will be one day not to exceed three days. One every six months, the cost would be fifty dollars. And for permit for estate tells, it would be for two days at a, at a cost of seventy-five dollars. These are the only changes that will be done to this ordinance. This is a public hearing, this item is not before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the amendment of chapter eighty-two sales article two, please approach the podium at this time. If you're in the audience. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for, is there anybody in electronics? Rio, the answer is no, am I correct? Okay, thank you. No, Alex, okay, I will close this public hearing and ask for the guidance of the council.
Move for approval, ma'am.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
All those suppose same sign, motion carries, the ordinance fifty-one eleven is approved four zero. And we're going for item number eight, public hearing. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number eight is a discussion and action to amend chapter forty-two health, health and sanitation, article two, weedy lots, unsanitary conditions on private property, section forty-two dash forty-one building for rendered services and costs. Section forty-two dash forty-three liens and if the council is inclined to approve this ordinance and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. During the joint workshop between the planning and zoning and city council, a direction was given to amend this ordinance. This ordinance currently only allows our city manager to look at any any services rendered regarding building invoices, so when he's not here, he's, people have to wait. So in order to do that, we are adding that it be the city manager or any designated agent that could waive either the partially or fully a miscalculated invoice. We are amending section forty-three, forty-two, forty-three liens to remove city secretary as a person filing the liens and adding finance department. And then we're increasing the wave amount of a lien, currently it's five hundred dollars per lien. We're increasing it to seven fifty and this is, the lien is waived by the judge. And it's per lien, this is a public hearing, this item is not before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against the the amendment of chapter forty-two health and sanitation article two? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, therefore I'm going to ask for electronics, is there anybody in electronics and Alex, anything? I'm going to call, close this public hearing and ask for the guidance of the council. But before the, before I open it for the council, I would like to 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 see if and ask the county, legal counsel, where it says city manager or designated agent, can we change the designated agent to be, to be one of, to be the deputy city managers?
Of course, ma'am.
I, I, mayor, I have a question on that.
Okay, go ahead.
I think it's rare that Randy's not here, so I don't even know why that's up for discussion. Like, I still, yeah, but I still think city manager should have the authority to decide that. Personally, because you have too many people, yeah, I wouldn't want to change that. I mean, it's very rare that Randy's not here anyway. And he's a phone call away, so I think if something needs to be signed or looked at, I think he should be the ultimate authority for something like that. Just saying.
Done at the request of the finance.
Yes, I, I understand, the finance part is fine, but I feel that ultimately, whenever there's documents or something in reference to this, it should be our city manager.
Well, if we're not going to make any changes on the designated area, why change the city secretary and just keep it, keep the ordinance as is? You know, has, has it really a major problem, Randy?
No, sir, the only change, if that's the wish of the council, would be the, the amount from five hundred to seven fifty, that would be the only change.
I'll go, I'll go with that.
What would they, what would they do? Would we have more weedy lots or less? I mean, that's the major difference.
No, sir. No, it's just the, the, the amount of the, the wave would be on the, on the, on the court side. But it would, everything would remain the same.
And if it's approved.
Yes, sir.
I would like just another mind there, but I would like just product is something that because right now, there's a weedy lot, we send a notice to the citizen and giving them how much time?
Ten days.
Ten days.
Ten days to comply, that is actually a yearly notice that we, that we provide to the citizen. Within those, within that year, if the lot is weedy again, we'll put it on the mowers list.
So you don't have to notify them again?
No.
And then they get the bill?
And they get a bill, if it cuts, if it gets cut, yes, they'll go to bill.
Do they actually get a bill?
Yes, they do. They get an invoice.
Okay.
And do they also get a notice that that we have administered a lien on the property?
Yes.
We don't.
When, when does the lien get placed?
Yes, the lien is filed, we be, we give them thirty days to pay and so we probably wait an additional thirty days before filing the lien. So it could be a total of sixty days before the lien is filed.
To hope they respond and.
Yes.
And they take care of business.
Yes. And I just want to clarify on the first part, the billing section where we're adding the rendered services and costs to add the city manager designated we're adding that to the billing portion, which means that he'll now have the authority to waive it without filing a lien. Because right now, if somebody comes to contest the lien, I mean, a mowing, we tell them all, the judge won't see them unless it's a lien, because the wording on the liens side specifically says you can't go to the, the city manager designated authority unless it's a lien. So we're having to spend the cost of filing a lien before they can dispute it. And so we're kind of adding that section to the billing side of it as well. It's the same wording that's on the lien side, we're just duplicating it on the billing side so that we don't have to follow me, that they can talk to city manager before filing it, or the judge if he designates the judge.
But if the customer, if the customer or the citizen has, wants to pay the bill for the, for the they can do it without having to go to the judge, right?
Correct, or make a payment with us.
But correct, it's for those that are contesting the, the bill.
Yeah.
That they wouldn't be able to come to Randy or designated person until the lien is filed, which is just an extra step that may not be necessary, correct? So I agree with that end of it.
So where we add, we start with Ms. Ortega, where, where are you at with this ordinance?
Well.
Well, let's start with Ms. Ortega.
Whatever steps wants, it's up to Randy, whatever he wants. If this is going to be a smoother process.
You were going to say something?
Well, I mean, and I understand Randy's here all the time, but I think there's things that are, he needs to empower and authorize and delegate to, he has three deputy, I mean, assistance city managers, I mean, and I, I do not mind it, that's going to expedite the process to where you, they pay and release, because I know there's times where they pay and then by the time they file the release, it takes a while, so they can expedite, especially when people is trying to close on a transaction, it takes a little bit longer, I know I seen that with some customers. So whatever Randy thinks is is best to provide good service to our citizens, I mean, of course, you have a a city man or an assistant that is waving too much stuff on you, or there's something that you need to address.
Yeah. See, see, but it goes back to the, the, the reason why I wanted to to change the designated agents is because the line of succession. We can use our regular city organizational chart and have the, the deputy city managers the, you know, and 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 we have three of them, so whichever one you choose. But this is not to speak before, before opening. Go ahead.
Um, I kind of like the idea of keeping Randy as the person that signs off on it, but I do agree with lien not necessarily having to be filed before he can waive the, the fee.
So we can keep that part and and add the five hundred to seven hundred and fifty also.
That also.
Also, and and change the designated agent to be, to be the deputy city manager.
No, I, I'd rather see Randy.
It says or. But but it's up to Randy.
The way it's proposed is or, but the way it isn't currently, it's only Randy has that option to do that.
My understanding that Randy doesn't have the option right now.
Well, I, I can waive a portion, this is, this is only if it's not gone through the court, it's, the, the judge has a different discretion for that.
Well, yeah, currently, it's only what, what the ordinance has is only if it has a lien.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so right now, Randy doesn't have the option with a non-lean person. You know, that hasn't filed the, and and that's really what the problem is that you have people that that, that we have to expedite the lien or the resolution that Mr. Plata is talking about.
No, if there's no, if there's no lien, there's not an issue in the closing, so that's not a problem.
No, there's no lien, no.
No. It's only when there's a lien.
No, only there's a lien.
There's a bill for us, there is a, there is a.
One question.
Might not be a problem for the filter, you know, but it's a problem for us. Because you're going to close the property and they're not going to pay us for the services that that we have already done as a city.
And and the reason why we kind of left the designated is just because if he wants to continue to designate the judge, the judge can now see these as well.
So in this case, the judge is not.
There, if it doesn't have a lien, the judge doesn't see it.
But if it does have a lien, the judge, well, that's the way I want it, I want it to be as a lien, it's a legal issue, so.
I would rather keep it streamlined and have just one person be able to do it, Randy's here all the time. He, and then he needs to know what's going on and it's not like he does them every day.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering if we have a list of how much we waive or how much.
Let me, let me get Mr. Pedersen, we'll let you speak.
Yes, I mean, I, I don't have an issue with maintaining the signature on this. We don't see them too, too often. And and again, it's, it's for the ones that that do not have a lien. And so we can continue as, as is. If we see an increase or for, for whatever reason that, you know, I'm not absolutely available, then we'll, we'll bring it back to the council, that's the direction.
Okay. So for the record, what are we going to prove?
Yeah, so what are we going to do?
What are we going to prove for the record? Or, or, what are we going to prove?
We're improving the increase on the lien, right?
Yes.
And we're going to keep Randy being the person that signs off on it.
And eliminated designated agent.
Allow him, no, and we're going to allow him to see, to waive a fee, not necessarily a lien.
It's going to be to seven hundred.
And the filing?
The filing of changing it from city secretary to finance department, that's just house cleaning. Taking it away from city secretary, they just nail it off, and so we just wanted to fix it.
I, yeah, I think that's okay, I think that's fine, I think that Anna does need to be filing those things.
In fact, fact that she is monitoring with the actual. We just needed to match the books with what we're actually doing, so by making that change, it's just a matter of.
So why don't we just leave it the way it is?
Well, we, we want to change the five hundred to seven hundred.
We need to increase the amount.
Yes.
So in other words, we're giving him more authority to waive more?
Yes.
How long are they waiting now?
Up to five hundred.
Up to five hundred, and really, the, the average now we see with the interest does kind of go over, it's like at five ninety-six, six hundred, we see them go up just because the cost of the mowing has gone up.
Yeah.
You know, but in this one, I'm saying, I mean, if you're waving, I mean, it's not just a one time. For five hundred dollars, it's about three or four times.
No, it's only one time, it can be one time, that's what they're saying.
Well, because it's a commercial. You can vote however, but I'm not going to vote for, I just don't want to waive, I mean, if they have liens, they need to pay them.
You're tough.
Well, it takes a lot of work, isn't it?
Yeah, and somebody has to pay.
Okay, so obviously, staff put this line item on there. So Susie, you, you and Ms. Angie wanted this on the agenda because there's obviously something that needs to be corrected. Which is, what is the problem?
And at length, at the workshop also.
At the P and Z and, and city council workshop, this was one of the items that was discussed.
I don't think none of us would want a weedy lot next to our house.
And I'm sure they call to complain, the neighbors.
Okay, so I mean, so we're not taking those neighbors into consideration that you try to keep your lawn nice and clean and then your neighbor doesn't? Or there is a price to pay, is the way I look at it.
This is saying.
Yes, it is, and and I guess the concern that we just have, that we see not too often, but we do see is that we get a customer who complains about the bill and then we tell them, well, and we will make payment rates, we work with them, but they just don't, they want to see and they can until they get a lien, so we do the paperwork to file the lien thirty days. We try to get it done as quick as possible and then we see they sold the property before we know. And so then that lien stays on the property and the new owner comes and I wasn't aware of this and we check and yes, it got sent to the previous owner and all that, and so we show the judge the proof and so then it gets waived completely. Whereas maybe if we have presented it, we can waive a portion of the admin fee, a portion, you know, something.
So, so they can pay at the time and not wait the thirty days.
And and Randy has that discretion, right? He didn't have to waive the whole thing?
Yeah, he didn't have to waive the whole thing, it's just up to, but he doesn't have to, up to the whole, he can waive that.
And, and that's, and this is, and this is something that I, you know, definitely try not to, you know, only if if they have the justification for it at that point. If there was an error for whatever reason on the property, then we do charge back the contractor for that fee and for that way, for that mowing as well, so we, that's, this is something that we don't want to, to do on a, on a, you know, on any of the properties, however, there is some circumstances that it is a justifiable.
I, I can make a motion and whoever wants a second, they know they can do, so I wait to deny the request.
Do I hear a mo, a, a second? Do I hear a second? Mr. Plata, your motion is denied based on no second. It's part of the policies.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now do I hear another motion?
Can we have Andy or?
You want to?
No, 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 re- repeat the, the changes.
So we'd like to change the billing section to add that the city manager can waive either partially or fully any miscalculated invoice without the lien and to amend the section forty-two, forty-three to remove city secretary and add finance department as the authorized agent and to increase the wave amount from five hundred to seven fifty per lien.
I make that motion.
We, we are motion in a second and I'll give the opportunity for Mr. Plata, if you want to further discuss this issue.
Not until discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Plata. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
All those suppose same sign?
Aye.
One, a motion passes three to, three to one for the record and you have ordinance fifty-one twelve. Fifty-one twelve is your ordinance that was passed, three to one. Now call for item number nine. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number nine is a discussion and plausible action to designate honorary street name. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. Staff received a written request to have the name of their family member, private Robert Bovoye, as an honorary name on Dordy Avenue from East First Street northward to Eighth Street. A distance of a quarter of a mile, Mr. Bovoye, serving in the infantry, was killed in layed action on November second nineteen forty-four in World War Two. He was a native of mission where he received public school education. Private Bovoye had been overseas nine months, having been sent over four months after his induction. He received his training at Fort Sam Houston. Before his induction, he has been employed as a truck driver for Mission Fruit and Vegetable Company. His family respectfully requests that an honorary street name be approved on the stretch of Dordy Avenue where it intersects with Seventh Street inclusive of First. on the stretch of Doherty Avenue where it intersects with Seventh Street inclusive of First through Eighth Street. An honorary street man will have no change in the address for anyone. P and Z and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is not before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this designated honorary street? If you're at the audience at this time, please approach the podium. Anybody in favor against, please approach the podium if you're in the audience. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask for electronic. Is there anybody in electronic that would like to speak on the, is the public hearing? Alex, we don't have anybody? Okay, I will close this public hearing and ask for the guidance from the council.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries and, uh, and we approve, uh, ordinance fifty-one thirteen with a vote of four zero. Fifty-one thirteen is approved.
Mayor, I have a question for Ms. Luna.
Yes, ma'am.
In reference to, uh, naming of streets, if we have a community member that also would love, I, I would like to know if do we have set policy or an ordinance in reference to how a community member can come and do something like this for their loved one?
We do have an ordinance in place.
Okay.
And an application also.
And then it goes through you all and you go through the committee.
That we would forward it to them. They would need to meet certain criteria before we present it.
Okay.
And it's also, it's also central planning and zoning.
You're the, you're the content person?
Yes.
And then you have to verify the credentials and so forth and, and, and restore that it is an honor to be able to name the, the person. And in this case, this undisputable, everything was approved, was the, the data that was presented was all, uh, validated and, and, and that he, uh, he died in World War Two in, in, in action and, and the honor is very well served and bestowed on, on the veterans. And since City of Mission has been moving toward, uh, veterans uh, appreciation, you know, in general speaking, you know, Veterans Day was an excellent, uh, an excellent example of that, you know, and, and so we're moving forward. But yes, we do have a process in place for it.
Okay, so my second part to that question is if they're not a veteran and it's a person that has done a tremendous amount of community service, public service within the City of Mission and the fam-, because I've been approached by several family members. And so would they be able to name the street of where their loved one was resided?
In this case, they can, but there's a petition that they will need to get signatures from and meet a certain criteria. It's based on that, uh, on that ordinance, but yes, they can.
Okay, thank you very much.
And advise them to come to, to the plan zone. We have an application and, and, and they have very clear steps. They need to be followed and validated and verified for the purpose of the, of the, uh, recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Suzie.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Luna, for item number nine and, and approval of, uh, ordinance fifty-one thirteen. Now I'll go to consent agenda. All consent agenda is considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The City Council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The City Council may elect to go into executive session on any item, whether or not such item is posted as an executive session item at any time during the, the meeting when authorized by the provision of the Open Meeting Act. Consent agenda item ten, consent agenda item eleven, consent agenda item twelve, consent agenda item thirteen, and consent agenda item fourteen is before you council, and I'm looking for guidance.
I'm on to approve.
We have, we have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, second, and any discussion? I forgot to ask if any of the council members wish to, uh, remove any of them items from the consent agenda item. Do we have anything? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries consent agenda item ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are approved four zero. And I'm asking for approval and authorization and I'm calling for item number fifteen. Uh, Mr. Alveda, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, council members, mayor, city manager. Item fifteen, authorization to award bid for liquid ammonium sulfate chemical for the Public Works Department North and South Water Treatment Plants. The City of Mission received an open three bid responses for liquid ammonium sulfate chemical. Staff recommendation is to award bid to Chemtray Chemicals U.S. LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities and orders will be placed on an as-needed basis for a one-year base term at a cost of zero point one three nine zero cents per pound. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm on to approve.
We are motioning on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number fifteen is approved four zero, and I'm calling for item number sixteen. Mr. Alveda, you have the floor.
Uh, item sixteen, authorization to award bid for liquid aluminum sulfate chemical for the Public Works Department North and South Water Treatment Plants. The city received an open four bid responses for liquid aluminum sulfate chemical. Staff recommendation is to award, to award bid to Chemtray Chemicals U.S. LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities and orders will be placed on an as-needed basis for a one-year base term, a cost of zero point zero nine eight eight cents per pound. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm on to approve.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number sixteen is approved four zero, Mr. Alveda, and I'm calling for item number seventeen. Mr. Benson, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Have before you item number seventeen, which is the approval for the purchase and installation of playground equipment via, via buy board contract. This is for new playground equipment for replacement of the obsolete equipment currently at Banworth Park. This comes with a winter price reduction sale of sixty-eight thousand dollars less, which is greater than that of the typical buy board discount. Price of the purchase and installation of this playground equipment is two hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars from Park Place Recreation Design via buy board contract number five nine two dash one nine. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We are motioning on the floor to approve. I recognize Mr. Plata. Mr. Plata, you want a second? We have, we have a second. This I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number seventeen is approved four zero, Mr. Benson, and I'm calling for item number eighteen. Ms. Carrillo, you have the floor.
Yes, mayor, council. Um, item number eighteen is a memorandum of understanding. This would be between the County of Hidalgo and the City of Mission. This is to designate parking spaces for veterans at, uh, City of Mission facilities. Um, the County of Hidalgo would be providing the signage for the purpose of these designated parking spaces. And we've currently designated fourteen signs. Uh, two at City Hall on the west and east, east side. Uh, the Police Department and Municipal Court is one sign, Parks and Recreation, one sign. Uh, Fire Department Central Station, one sign, Golf Course, one. Food pantry, one, library, one. Historical Museum, one, Boys and Girls Club, one, um, the Natatorium, one. Banworth Gym, CWV Gym, and the Mission Event Center, two signs, for a total of fourteen signs. They did not tell us how many signs, uh, we can get, but that's what we're gonna be, uh, requesting. And of course, if they can offer us more, well, then, you know, we'll, we would do that for our veterans. It would not be, you know, it'd be separate, separate from the handicap signs. These will be designated for veterans.
That's awesome. I make the motion to approve.
We, we have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, and in the, I open it for discussion. Mr. Plata, you would say something?
No.
Okay, anybody else? I just wanna compliment, uh, uh.
How soon will those be up?
Uh, as soon as this gets approved, we'll make contact with them tomorrow. Of course, it's a short week for them also, so, um, they've said that they would give us the signage and they can also install them once we, you know, designate them. We'll get on it right away.
This is another step that the City of Mission is taking to honor our, our veterans.
Yes, sir, and the signs are very nice. It's got all of the, the seals of all of the branches, so they're, they're really, really nice signs.
In Mission, we take care of our veterans.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number eighteen is approved four zero, Ms. Carrillo, so I'm calling for item number nineteen. Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Item number nineteen is the approval of the certified twenty twenty-one tax roll totals. The total taxable value is four billion, nine hundred and forty-five million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-one, which gives a total tax levy of twenty-five million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and six cents at a rate of point fifty-two ninety-nine. Total M and O is twenty-one million, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three, seventy-seven, and total INS is four million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven, twenty-nine. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number nineteen is approved four zero and calling for item number twenty.
Item number twenty is the approval of the October twenty twenty-one property tax report. The total adjusted twenty twenty tax levy is twenty-six million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. And the amount of collections is October thirty-first is two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents, which represents point eighty-four percent of the total twenty twenty-one tax levy. Total adjusted delinquent tax levy is two million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-six cents. And the amount of collections is of October thirty-first is fifty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents, which represents two point twenty-eight percent of the total delinquent tax levies. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I want to approve.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
But I have a second in this opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number twenty is approved four zero, and I'm gonna use my, uh, chair, uh, discretionary and call for item number twenty-seven. Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-seven is the approval of the budget amendments, which is, we have two. One in M D C fund and one in the park dedication fund. In M D C fund, we have twenty thousand in expenditures for an approval infrastructure improvement project that was approved by the M D C board on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. And in the park dedication fund, we have a reclassification for two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seven dollars for the regional park project at Banworth. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number twenty-seven is approved four zero, Ms. Bella.
Thank you.
And, and I'm moving now to item number twenty-one, Mr. Vanessa. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, mayor, council. Uh, item number twenty-one is authorization to award bid for Boys and Girls Club athletic league uniforms. City Mission received an open three bid responses for the purchase of athletic league uniforms. Staff is seeking authorization to award bid to My Rival Gear, who is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting all specifications and conditions in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. Award is for a one-year base with two one-year renewal options. Uh, staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I was gonna say, I don't hear a second. I'll do a second myself, but I got two seconds, so. And this I open it for discussion.
I have a question. On the two options, on the two renewal options, is there an increase in, on the price or is it the same price?
One percent.
One percent on each year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's max.
That's max, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, item number twenty-one is approved four zero and calling for item number twenty-two. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Mayor and council, item number twenty-two is a preliminary plat approval for Hidden Hills Estates subdivision. This is a subdivision of thirty-nine point one eighty-eight acres out of lot nineteen dash three, twenty dash three and twenty dash four west addition to Sheraton. This is currently zone R two duplex four pets and R three multifamily residential. The developer is Luis Valencia and the engineer is Melvin and Hunt. This property is located approximately four hundred and eighty feet south of the intersection of North Holland Avenue and Business eighty-three. They're proposing forty-seven duplex four pets residential lots and one detention pond. They will have city water and city sewer. P and Z and staff recommended approval. This item is not before you.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries item number twenty-two is approved four zero, Ms. Luna, and I'm calling for item number twenty-three. You have the floor, ma'am.
Item number twenty-three is a preliminary plat approval for speedy trail subdivision. This is a twenty point thirty acre tract of land out of lot twenty-eight dash five west addition to Sheraton. It's currently zone R one single family residential. The developer is Roberto Calvillo and the engineer is Bruce Hogan Engineers. This property is located at the southeast corner of West Mall Two Road and North Holland Avenue. The developer is proposing a hundred and seven single family residential lots and one detention pond. The developer is requesting, uh, variances on eighty-five lots. Seventy-five internal lots will vary, will have widths varying from fifty to fifty-three, where the minimum is sixty for internal lots and the square footage is six thousand square feet. And six external and corner lots with varying widths from fifty to sixty-three, where the minimum is sixty-five for external and sixty-five thousand square feet. They will have city water and sewer. The city engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. In this case, uh, P and Z recommended approval. Staff is seeking your direction on this one. This item is not before you.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
To the zero, uh, there's how many lots that are gonna be?
There are a hundred and seven, uh, propose a hundred and seven, and they're requesting variances on eighty-five of them.
Okay.
Can you show? The one with the variances, so you could.
The other one.
The shaded lots are the ones that are not meeting the sixty feet?
Yes.
Could we do what we kind of did with the other, another, um, recent plat that we, um, they went and rezoned it to?
Well, it hasn't, it hasn't gone to council yet. You'll be seeing that rezoning on the thirteenth, December thirteenth.
Which one?
P and Z recommended, uh, the one for Lantana.
Okay.
You'll, it hasn't been approved.
Formally.
Formally, yes.
But P and Z approved it?
P and Z recommended approval.
And the reason, the reason, the only reason that I would, 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 I would tend to do this is because, uh, I'm, I'm a firm believer of whatever is on the ground should, should, you know, would represent what's on the map. And if we, if on our map, we have the R one T, then these lots would, wouldn't need the variances.
That is correct.
So.
Yes, I just wanted to make a point on this one. Uh, this is a, uh, nonprofit organization, Affordable Homes, uh, that will be constructing, constructing these homes. I just wanted to share that information just because it's of the R one T.
And Mr. Carrillo, could you come forward, please, to the podium? Because, uh, because I know, I know we discussed, uh, we discussed a pre-variance, uh, uh, contract with you, so. You wanna, but we'll let Ms. Garcia.
I have one more question. I would be okay, uh, approving the, the plat and then rezoning it later. Yeah, zoning it, uh, rezoning it later so that you don't stop your, your process. Uh, I think that would help.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? Ms. Cortega, you have any questions?
No.
So the lot would stay at that, with that size?
Yes, the lots would stay, this plat would be approved.
Yeah.
And then we could, we could rezone it later so that, so that it does comply to, to the zoning that's, that's on the, on the ground. So it wouldn't stop the, the process of, of the construction or the plating or, or anything.
Can we, can you convert it to a motion?
The rezoning? Okay, well, they, they don't, they don't record it until after the improvements are in, so that's plenty of time. Yes, okay.
And you converted it to a motion, what you were saying, and.
I move for approval, uh, subject to the, the area being rezoned to R one T before plating.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and this I open it for discussion. I don't know, Mr. Calvillo, do you want to say anything and before, before I call for the vote, or do you want me to call for the vote and then say something afterwards?
I just, I appreciate the support. Um, as Mr. Perez mentioned, we are a five-on-one, C-three nonprofit corporation. Been in business for forty-five years and this is our first, our first, uh, development in Mission. We're, we're excited some.
And, and more to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna invite you more.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrillo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries item number twenty-three is approved. All those suppose same sign. Motion carries item number twenty three is approved four zero with the option for the rezoning of the R one T. You know, and call for item number twenty four, Mr. Mandiola, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Authorization to purchase six hundred and twenty four residential refuge carts from Toder via H G A C contract number R C twenty one A one ten. Due to the city's rapid growth, the sanitation department is requesting these refuge carts to, to keep up with the demand and the city's current services. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and before I call for a vote, I do have a question, because that was the question that was asked to me by a citizen is. When are we gonna get our recycling bin, bins?
We're in the process of working it with RAG. We're in discussions of it and so we can start to.
I would like for you to see if you could, in the next workshop, and he, he come and give us an overview of the recycling plant.
Yes.
That you have.
Okay.
And what, maybe there'll be a, a one year plan, three year plan, ten year plan. And on it, because I'm, I'm getting a lot of questions about, about the recycling.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we, we've talked about as part of the, the live club, remember the, the live park, we said we were gonna have a. And on the outset, the, the we, we said that we were not gonna do the recycling there, but the question that people are asking is where? Where and how and when and, you know, so just if you could get something together, slide presentation or something to the council.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, and so the public that listens and hears to us, which we have a lot of people that listen to it. And here are all, all over the United States, the, the, our, our city council meetings, you know, that, that they, they being warm as well as we. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, and just to, we are planning to relocate that, that section. We, the city, the city owns property along Kika, west of Conway. Along the curve on fifteenth street and Kika, Kika de Garza Loop. We are looking to relocate to a small section of that property to put a, a building there, not necessarily a, a big building, but a, a portable building that could be a drive up. For recycling, so that's, that would be the current.
So, so if we could do that, you know, and maybe not for December, but, but at least in January, do a little workshop, maybe. Before one of the city council meetings, because I know I'm getting a lot of questions on that, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All suppose same sign. Motion carries four zero, Mr. Mandiola, for item number twenty four. And I'm calling for item number twenty five, Mr. Terrazza, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come before you to present item twenty five. Authorization to award bid for North Conway store improvements. We receive and accepted five year responses for the North Conway sanitary store improvements between mile two and mile three on the west side. Staff recommendation is to award to R D H site and concrete, who's the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Meeting all the specifications and conditions in the amount of six hundred and sixty seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Second.
What's the wish of the council? We have a motion and a second, sorry. And open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All suppose same sign. Motion carries, I do have one question that, that, this is on the west side.
It's on the west side, and we also have approximately a thousand meter feet on the east side from mile two to east side.
Okay, we, we.
Close the gap on sewer.
All right, so, so there is going to be sewer on the, on the east side?
Yes, we can close the gap between mile two and mile three on both sides.
Beautiful. Thank you, JP.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate those projects because people are ready to expand in, in that area, but they, they don't wanna expand because of the cost of sewer. You know, but once we have our, our distribution line there, it's gonna go fast.
This won't take over with this budget.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Item number twenty six, Mr. Perez.
I guess, item twenty six is discussing possible action on modifying COVID nineteen city mission guidelines. And I, I do wanna go over, oh, the, the current incentive program is, is working very well. Today, we had our second vaccine clinic. We are seeing increased numbers, surprising to the county, the turnout that we've been receiving with the, with the vaccines. We've administered. The first, the first one was four hundred and forty eight vaccines total, and the second one was four hundred and fifty five vaccines.
How many of those was for the first time?
Two hundred and eighteen.
Two hundred and eighteen first.
First ones. Yes, that's correct, and so on, on the two, on the two, they've been two hundred and eighteen, an average of about a hundred or so on each. One of the things that we, we have seen an increase is the, the amount of children getting vaccinated. They're coming in especially today because of school being out, so the kids came in as well. However, we did see it, quite a few kids as well last week as well, but we are seeing those numbers increase.
And our next one is when?
On the twenty ninth, next Monday, as well. That one's from twelve to five. That is, so we're still, we, we are preparing for, for the additional increase a, as well. And so we are looking at, at, you know, continuing this program. We did, we did have, we, we're currently at thirty two businesses with nine pending, so we'll be up to forty one. They're finalizing the paperwork for that.
And it's still open for businesses because I, I had that call today.
Yes, yes, we are, we're still signing up. Actually, we have nine pending that are finalizing paperwork, so we're still increasing that, so we'll, we'll increase that to forty one. And so we are taking, we still either knocking on doors or advertising as well, so we're sharing that information, so that's really increase of participation. One of the things that we would like to present today to the council for consideration is we're, staff, staff and, and we've been in discussion of the upcoming incentive programs. For the already vaccinated employees, because we have been, I mean, employees, sorry, but citizens. We have been receiving calls about everyone that already has first, second dose and possibly the booster. Excuse me, and so we, we're looking at, at the amount that we would wanna offer for those individuals that are already fully vaccinated. Or have already received the first, second dose. If they come for the booster, they get fifty dollars. So currently, right now, the way the, the incentive is a hundred for the first dose. Twenty for, I mean, I'm sorry, fifty for the second and fifty for the booster. And so they have to be mission residents and they are providing proof of that. One of the things that we do wanna, once we open it up to the one already vaccinated is, is a separate event, not necessarily a vaccine clinic.
But are we gonna do a separate pool? Are we gonna do a separate pool? In other words, if they, if they already got the fifty dollars from the booster, they won't be eligible for.
Yeah, so, so we'll, we'll make that determination whether they've received one or the other. What we do is we'll check the dates. More likely, if they already received the booster, they received the fifty dollar incentive, and so we'll look at the other two, so. The, the question that, that we'd like to discuss is the amount that we would like to offer now. We, we had originally looked at seven hundred, seven, what we, we first did for the first, so we're looking at about a seven hundred and fifty thousand. Balance in, in this incentive program, you know, how much do we wanna target, whether it's a hundred, a hundred and fifty?
I would stick to fifty dollars, so we, since we're doing the fifty dollars for the, for the second dose and the, and the booster, you just, you know, fifty dollars.
Just, just so we can, we can, we can, we're able to service, yes, exactly, and that's one of the, one of the points that I wanted to, to, because if, if we put that. That'll serve about fifteen thousand residents at fifty dollars. So anyone that has been, received the vaccination already, again, we'll, we'll plan for a separate one, probably, probably in December, early December. To be able to just do a drive through on that one, because we will have more individuals come in with already their card. And to show proof of the mission residency and then at that point do that. So we'll, we'll continue with the fifty dollars, if that's the, the direction. And then the other, we, we have been receiving still requests for authorization for gathering. If you recall back then, it was, it was an authorization either by the mayor or the council.
I've got a few of those and.
So whether we, we. So that, so the, the, yeah, so the discussion would be just to, to allow the gatherings at that point, and not necessarily request, we would get the request individually.
If we're having football games and, and you know, you know, just, just, let's just do it today, you know, open it up today.
Okay.
As part of your recommendation, so we can approve it as a council.
And currently, again, doing very well, our, we have no employees out, thank God, for any, any type of pandemic.
And on the nineteenth, the nineteenth, the county reported zero death in the out county on November the nineteenth. That's, that's another great sign.
Aside from that, sir, that's, that's what we have to report.
Any questions in the council on the COVID nineteen strategies and anything that you all wanna do or recommend to do?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So what about the masks? Does everybody still wear them, or if they've already had the booster and all that, like, because I've been seeing more and more, and I know I, I'm at fault for most of the time, too. But whenever I'm around people that I really, even at work, I still have to. I mean, it's, it's required at the W I S D. But for here, how much longer are we gonna require our employees to wear?
So we're not requiring any employee to wear, we just ask them to, we encourage them, and, and so. The majority of them are currently still do, some do not, but we've been, we've still been maintaining the sanitation practices that we, we have. And so it's, it's, it's been helping, however, we have about a, a large percentage that still do and, and some don't, so it's just.
I would like to add, for you to add it in your recommendation that the face mask in, in the city mission will be voluntary, voluntary and, and discretion of self protection. From the individuals, so those people that, that feel that they need to wear the mask, wear the mask, like I wear it once in a while, you know, when I get to areas where. Like, like, you know, when I, you know, I just, I carry it with me.
Yes, I, so do I, yes.
You know, so, so depending who I'm, I'm dealing with, if I know, if I've seen them, if they've been around me already before, you know, I don't wear the mask, but, but, but I get people that I've never seen before. You know, I'll, I'll put it on just for, for self protection, you know, and I guess that's, that's what I would like for, for your, your recommendation.
Yes, sir.
I guess my question to you, Mr. Randy, is that when we have a community member come in to pay and just different things, city hall is already open.
Yes.
So they can come to the front window.
Correct.
Are they required to wear a mask? So, no, they can come in for services without a mask.
Yes, and, and we did install Plexiglas in all our departments where we have interaction with the public. However, the, we do have signs that still say strongly encourage masks, and so the practice is citizens come in with a mask. We don't deny anyone from coming into the building if they're not, but for the most part, the majority do still wear masks.
And we also encourage the employees for them to wear the mask when they make contact with, with the outside public, you know. You know, it's just a self protection again.
Yes.
So can I have a motion to approve what Mr. Perez just recommended? We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those suppose same sign. Motion carries item number twenty six is, is approved, presented by Mr. Perez. And I'm calling for, for any unfinished business, which is none, and then I'm calling for the routine matters, and I'm gonna ask the city manager. We already did, we were up.
Own turn.
Twenty seven, we already, since Ms. Vela was here, I didn't want to. To, to come back and, back and forth and take care of business. You have a portion.
Oh, thank you. I do wanna announce that we, we have a, all city offices will be closed Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of this week. We do have staff on call as always for any emergencies or any need. But we, we will be available if needed for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holidays. Also, I do wanna announce that on Saturday, November twenty seventh at nine AM, at the Rio Grande Valley State Veteran Cemetery, we'll have. A wreath laying ceremony, that is at the veteran cemetery, and that's this Saturday. Also, you know, the, the events last week, we just wanna mention that we, we had the, the turkey distribution for our community with the Crime Stoppers. Over two hundred families were assisted, thanked them. The, the Crime Stoppers Mission Police Department, of course, cooperation with the city as well, that was very successful. We did have the, the tree lighting on Friday that was very well attended, and so we wanna thank staff for all their hard work for that. Parks and Recreation put a lot of hours, and it was also a weekend event, Friday and Saturday, and so that was well attended. Many residents look forward to the, the activities that we have outdoors, so we appreciate that. And last out, just wanna wish everyone a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Call for mayor's comment. First of all, I wanna thank everybody and anybody that was involved with the flag displaying of the, during Veterans, in. The Veterans Day or before Veterans Day, so thank you very much for all, for all the hard work. That was the, you know, I know the storm didn't help any, you know, but it is what it is, you know. Thank you, staff that went back and, and tried to, to, to recover every, every flag that went in there. In fact, I myself stopped in a couple of places. Because just, just, I saw them and I, and I could handle it to be able to, to, to bring it back to, to its flying stage and, and give the honor of our flag that symbolizes freedom. And then we, we thank all the veterans that have served, as well as the ones that are serving right now, that are creating the, the concept of freedom for, for not only the city of Mission, but also the state of Texas and. Definitely the United States of America, that's one. And I also wanna thank all the persons and nonprofits and, and, and every single veteran that was involved in the Veterans Meal also. That one, I'm still getting calls from veterans thanking, thanking me that, 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 that the city of Mission is, is very targeted and intentional in, in, in providing services for the veterans. And today was not any different in our, in our agenda. I would like to echo the, the, the city managers on the turkey, you know, I had the opportunity to be able to give a few of them to, to the citizens. And the, and the smiles that they would give us as we approached car by car are, that's, that's, they're, they're priceless. Those, those faces are priceless and, and, and it's a smile from the heart to our heart that we give to them back. It's heart to heart love in the, in the city of Mission and thank the Crime Stoppers who spearheaded and thank every police officer that allow us. To, to have that flow of traffic cheap without a, without a, an incident, you know. Because I know, I know that a lot of the officers are, are provide a service there and are never recognized. And make sure that when you brief them, thank you on behalf of myself, and I'm sure that I can say for the council the same thing as far as that is concerned. I wanna also congratulate the city of Mission, city manager, and especially our public information division. Now we have a TV station, you know, for, I think the channel was one thirty, am I correct, on the cable?
Thirteen hundred, sir.
Thirteen hundred on the cable, on, on spectrum or any, any other.
Well, it's, it's on spectrum and, and we are planning to do a, a, a press release next week to do a, to announce to everyone as a public. We, we're currently testing through the, the, the channel right now, doing testing, but it seems like it's pretty ready to go. So we plan to make the announcement next week.
I think we went live on the Christmas lighting that, that evening, and I got a lot of phone calls from people outside, outside Mission. You know, that for one reason or another have found out that they could gain access to, to the TV channel, and I just wanna thank the staff, you know, I know we haven't added any staff members. For the TV and we just added the load to you all, and, but I just wanna tell Roxanna that, 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 thank you for the yeoman's job that they, that you all are doing and, and, and moving the city forward. To be able to, so we can telecommunicate with, with our citizens to let them know, because a lot of our citizens can't make the, the, the sites, so they can at least see us and hear us as we move along. As far as that, this morning, I had the opportunity to also to visit the vaccination clinic, you know, and, and I wanna thank all the staff members, Mr. Perez. That you have there and, and all the, and the boys club, you know, the boys club is always shining there and, and, you know, at, 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 all the police officers, all the firefighters. The inoculators that were out there, the county, all of it, and all in the team effort to be able to fight this COVID nineteen and bring the, the reduction to. And having over two hundred first timers for inoculation. And having over two hundred uh first timers for inoculation in, in both clinics is uh, is unpredictable as far as that. And I wanna thank also the staff that put out the, the, the Christmas lighting. Uh you know, I've had a lot of positive things, uh you know, uh Parks and Recreation, thank, thank you. And not only Parks and Recreation because sanitation and all the, all the other uh departments that have been in, you know, uh on, we, uh. I, I estimated that on uh, on Friday night, when we, after we took the, the, the light and we started the lights on. That we, at one point or another, and that, that evening was a, was a, a, was really, really uh over a thousand people that came in with children. And enjoyed themselves and thank you for all the donors who gave donations to the, all the bikes and all the gifts that, that, that come. They just doesn't happen by magic, you know, it takes a lot of work and a lot of, uh, and, and people giving from the heart as far as that. And then on Saturday at two o'clock when we opened again, we still had people there, we still had vendors there, we still had. Even uh, I, I had a, a good time with the, the clown that came, that came in uh, uh, at, at two o'clock. She was, she was wonderful, you know, and the kids just loved her and, and I, I was just a, I was just stunned that we weren't going live. So the people that didn't show that, you know, at the time on Saturday, that, that would, that, that was a great performance by, from her uh as far as that. As far as that is concerned, if you have not enjoyed that clown, uh speak to, I mean, she targeted children. But, but you, she, she made me laugh that second or not. She integrated the, the music as well as, as well as her talent into that and, and I, I don't remember her name, Mr. Menace, but uh. But. Okay, that, that one. That one, uh, but, but she was, she was just, uh, those that didn't go and of course the vaquero cook up also went on the Texas sisters fiesta. Thank you for uh, for that also, I heard that I didn't have an opportunity to go because of the nature of, of my schedule. You know, as far as that is concerned on Saturday, you know, but, but I, I, I did hear a lot of positive uh response from the vaqueros and so forth. I don't wanna take too much of our time, it's been a short week and it's gonna be a shorter week then next week. So, so I won't be speaking very, very much uh the next time under this item, so I'll call for the city council comments. Ms. Ortega, you have the floor.
Just happy Thanksgiving, everybody be safe. And if you have not gone to visit the doctor to get a checkup, please do so. Life is very precious and it's borrowed, we're on borrowed time. So please take care of yourselves, uh give each other a hug and a kiss and make sure you tell those that really mean something in your life that you love them. Thank you. God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Send here happy Thanksgiving, have a blessed Thanksgiving with your loved ones and please continue praying for council members' family.
Thank you. Ms. Gus?
Oh, I don't have any other comments, just echo my colleague's words.
Mr. Pettis, well, anything, you, you're through with you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into a executive session pursuant to BTCA government code section five five one point zero zero one. We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye. All those who oppose same sign, motion carries for the record, the record is three eight zero for the vote, uh Ms. Carrio. And we're in a ticket session.
To reconvene, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries and I will grant the 4-0 ruling on reconvene. Item number 28, Mr. Martinez.
Yes, sir Mayor, that is an eminent domain case from Taylor Road, Phase 2. There was a counter offer that was presented. I would need a motion to accept that counter offer.
We have a motion and a second. In this, I open it for further discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 29.
That is no action, Mayor.
We have no action. Item number 29, so I'm going to call for adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We adjourn 4-0.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
To reconvene, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries and I will grant the 4-0 ruling on reconvene. Item number 28, Mr. Martinez.
Yes, sir Mayor, that is an eminent domain case from Taylor Road, Phase 2. There was a counter offer that was presented. I would need a motion to accept that counter offer.
We have a motion and a second. In this, I open it for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 29.
That is no action, Mayor.
We have no action. Item number 29, so I'm going to call for adjournment.
I'm going to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We adjourn for zero.
Myself, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.